All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to the regular meeting of the Milwaukee Planning Commission. Agendas and additional copies of staff reports are available on the table in the hall. If you have not picked up an agenda, please do so. It contains important information about the process. If you wish to be included in the mailing list for a decision or for updates on the comprehensive plan, please add your name and contact information to the sign-up list located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to testify, please also fill out a yellow comment card. So, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January 8th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any corrections to make?
No.
Nope.
No. I'd like to make a motion to pass the January 8th, 2019 minutes as written. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Minutes are approved. Informational items. Are there any informational items from staff?
I've got a couple. At your next meeting, September 10th, we'll have the Elk Rock Estates application back before you for hopefully deliberation, but the city prepared its staff report and completed that today, posted it, which gives the applicant seven more days to prepare their rebuttal that would then all go out to you next week. At that meeting, we also had the railroad avenue subdivision scheduled. I believe that's going to be pulled and delayed to a later date. The other thing that went out just this last week was an incompleteness letter for the Monroe Apartments, the McFarland site apartments. There were some, a number of items that were incomplete in the current application, so we don't know when the applicant will file that, but they're interested in moving forward. We had a phone call with the applicant today about that. They wanted some clarification about a couple of the items, especially related to transportation. The CPAC is going to meet next Thursday, similar agenda to yours, talking about the comp plan design, urban design policies, as well as some neighborhood hub discussion. And then finally, one of the things that was pointed out at the last council meeting in public testimony is that there are a lot of people in the community that aren't tracking a lot of the current status on a number of the current planning projects in the central Milwaukee area and some of our long-range projects. So, much like we had done for the south downtown area, the website has a centralized page that lists a number of the projects for south downtown. We're going to do something similar for the central Milwaukee projects, the Hillside, the Monroe Street Apartments, what's the latest on the Murphy site, what's going on with some of those projects also that aren't central Milwaukee specific, but the cottage cluster project, the other requirements, the requirements that we need to go through to update some things for the comprehensive plan related to housing, and then also the neighborhood hubs project. So, we, the number of us met today to talk about the timing on that. We're hoping to get it up and online sort of mid-September. So, we'll keep everybody posted on that.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Well, it's great to see so many people out tonight to learn about the comprehensive plan and where we're at, so we look forward to that work session item that David will be leading us through about urban design policies. We don't have a hearing tonight, as many of you are probably aware, but every time we have Planning Commission, we offer time for audience members to make a comment about items that are not on tonight's agenda. So, I've received one comment card and would be happy to take that testimony now. And we'll give three minutes for those who wish to make a comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So, let's go ahead and do that. Ken Kraske?
It's not on the agenda.
So, on the agenda tonight, if you haven't picked one up, they're in the hallway. Tonight, on tonight's agenda is an informational, it's a work session item on the comprehensive block three policies for the comprehensive plan. It's urban design and land use. And so, that's just, it's a work session for the Planning Commission to look at their current policies with, that they're proposing for the new updated comprehensive plan. So, that's the only item on the agenda tonight. And so, if you wish to comment on something that's not on the agenda, we're happy to take that now. Did you want to come up and make comment?
I don't think it really matters. Sure.
So, if you could come up and we have a, we have three minutes for folks to do that, and so you state your name and address for the record and we'll start your three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Ken Kraske. I live at 9975 Southeast 36th Avenue, right behind the hospital. And I've come to the general city council meeting a few years ago when they were talking about urban renewal. Hi, Denny.
Hello.
How's it going? Anyway, and I've talked with Denny sometimes on and off. Usually I'm too busy, but I just thought it'd be good to check in after a little while because I'm sure most of you are, all of you are aware of the recent state law that just passed. I think it's SB something, but anyway, that supersedes a lot of local zoning. So, I wanted to ask you if you could respond to how that's going to affect zoning and urban planning here in Milwaukee, that state law, and whether that, to what extent does that supersede what you, it can do as a local body. I'm concerned about the trend that seems to be occurring, has been for many years in this country of power being ever more consolidated into fewer and fewer hands higher and higher. I don't want to see you guys lose all of your authority to do what you do because then that means we lose all of our representation too. So, I'm concerned about that. And then, there's also been some flyers distributed like this that are referencing the different zoning, the different density levels in different areas. And I wanted to know and understand more, is that related to the urban renewal plan that was put in a couple of years ago, or is this a totally different thing? And just as a, as a property owner and as a homeowner in the community, I've been there four years now and we really like it, my wife and I, I just want to get a sense of how it's going to go. I've seen how it's going in Portland. According to that state law, I could actually build a three-story, I think like a 16-unit apartment right on my quarter acre lot. I'm not going to do that, but the fact that that would be permitted says a lot about... So, if this whole process is usurped by out-of-state developers who see this as a land grab and a way to make a quick buck, like they're doing in Portland, and then they, the city suspends the parking regulations, so now you're going to have a lot of traffic. If you just read the newspaper from the southeast Portland, there's a lot of concern about this. I understand that, you know, things are drying up down in California and other places and a lot of people need to move up here because it's unlivable due to the warming climate, but I just think there should be limitations on use. And I don't know if it's just going to be limited to frontage or height restrictions, you know. I've seen many houses just down the street from me. Maybe that's already legal. It must be. It's right down on 36th, but they built this really high thing and this little house below it now, all of a sudden it's blocked off on the south side of their house. So, if the guy next to me sells or decides to build a high-rise, all of a sudden the value of my house goes down because it's, I'm looking at a wall. So, just practical things like that. You know, I understand affordable housing, you need to have more space for people, but I feel like that's just being used as a lever to bring this in. So, any comments or answers to those questions, I would appreciate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, we're not prepared to answer a question about new state laws and how they impact this local government in implementing them, but...
I think some of those questions might be answered through the, just through some of our conversation tonight.
Okay.
But, you know, it's House Bill, it's House Bill 2001 that I think you're referencing, but it basically says that where you have, where you allow single-family units, you have to also allow duplexes and possibly triplexes or cottage cluster development. You've got a little more flexibility in how you regulate that. That's part of our ongoing discussion. We have housing work that needs to be done. David, you jumped up.
I would just say I'd be happy to get into it in a little bit more detail when I get into my presentation, just I'm not kind of stopping the flow of public comment.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Our last public comment, Molly Thornley. If you can come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Molly Thornley, 100...
Hold the mic a little closer, please.
Okay. Molly Thornley, 10020 Southeast 37th Avenue, Milwaukee. And I guess I just wanted to make a statement that a lot of the neighbors are concerned about, and that's parking. You know, a lot of the new proposed developments, you know, the Hillside and the Monroe and the cottage clusters, there's not one parking place per household. And that, I realize that the idea is to make people not have cars, but I think that's unrealistic. And I just think that our whole neighborhood is going to be a parking lot. And it makes me kind of like nervous because in one square mile in my neighborhood with the development up here, the development behind Albertson's, we're looking at 1,000 new homes, just about, almost 1,000 new homes, and that doesn't include cottage clusters and so on. 1,000 new homes within a square mile, the traffic is going to be horrible, and if they're all parking on the street. So, I would hope that the city of Milwaukee, like the HUD place up here, they said that the, I think the high-density places they were thinking of, I can't remember what the ratio, but it wasn't one per, one car per apartment. They would have one car per house. Anyway, I would just really like to urge everyone to have parking places so that they, so that they're not all on the street in front of everybody's homes and have extra parking for guests. Just, anyway, a lot of people are really worried about the whole parking thing. And I'm not exactly looking forward to traffic with 1,000 new homes and maybe 1,500 to 2,000 more cars within a square mile on, you know, Harrison and Monroe, you know, it's like, it seems like a lot. So, that's all.
Well, thanks, and I'm glad you're here. We're going to talk about parking as part of the work session today. So, thank you. All right. Let's wrap it up. We really do need to get to our work sessions, so we'll take a couple more comments and...
One.
Yep. Okay. So, bring it on up and we'll close with the last two comments here. So, okay, yep. Can I have your yellow card though?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I just wrote my name on there.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Wait if you want later.
My name's Steve Fagan. I've lived at 3703 Southeast Harvey for years, 42 to be precise. And my wife and I started out there. There's plenty of stores in this area. There was, the fire department was, you know, right on, and they still are, but, and it had a good police department in the schooling, and it was rated fifth in the nation for safety. I see this as a giant step backwards. We have one viable store close to this neighborhood for the elderly folks that aren't able to get out as much as they used to be able to. We have a Safeway store that's worse than the zoo on Sunday. So, you know, something needs to be done about the infrastructure of this city before you start tearing up the neighborhoods and adding, sorry, a little upset, but before you start tearing up the neighborhoods and adding in 13 houses into a half an acre. And we're not just saying this, we've checked into this. And, you know, I've checked into this. I missed the last meeting because I was checking into this. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. I mean, infrastructure, we need stores. We may find people falling into those stores.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate your comments.
Don't forget your drink.
Oh, your water bottle, sorry.
That's on mic.
Oh, that's yours, David.
It is.
Okay. All right. Then never mind. Okay. And then Chris Holly Bailey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Chris Holly Bailey. I live at 8731 Southeast 40th, and I'm on the NDA board for Audenwald. And I just wanted to come, I wanted to say thank you guys for doing this work. People are looking for a place to live, like you said, and it's important that we're active in it. And that there's definitely, it seems like a lot of strong feeling in the neighborhood, and I really appreciated that you mentioned that you're going to work on some more outreach with the neighborhood. And I mostly just wanted to say that on behalf of the board, that we're hoping that we can work together with you guys to figure out a way to help out neighbors who are having concerns and feeling like they're not understanding what's going on. And so, I'm not sure who the person, who it would be to communicate with, but that like on behalf of the board, that we'd like to help be part of any sort of process so we can figure out to be supportive for people who are having questions and motions about changes to help them feel included in the process. So, that's basically what I wanted to say.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming.
Check me.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it also comes back to goal one. So, I'm, so again, glad that lots of folks are here to understand the comprehensive plan, which, you know, guides Milwaukee in its decision-making on land use side items and planning and all of that. So, one, the first goal is goal one, and that is community involvement or community engagement. So, I think that, you know, obviously folks are interested in getting involved right now, which is, it's great. It's great timing, and this is a good opportunity for, for you guys to understand the comprehensive plan and what that means, and then how we use that document to guide us in making decisions. So, it's, it's great to have you here. And so, with that, I think we, given that there is no public hearing tonight, we now will move into the work session. And David Levitan is going to talk us through where we are. We've, we've been working on block three, and so this is the final piece of block three. And you can give more detail, but...
All right. Thank you, Chair Travis.
Yeah.
David Levitan, Senior Planner here with the City of Milwaukee. So, I'm going to talk about the...
Can you move the mic a little bit closer?
Yeah. We're going to talk tonight about the urban design policies, which we didn't get a chance to review at the last meeting on August 13th. For some reason, it got to be about 9:55 and you decided you didn't want to start that item, so... But anyway, let me go ahead and get this queued up. So, just a little bit on our agenda, I'm going to start just by giving a little bit of a status update on where we're at with the comp plan on block three and then where we'll be going. And then we'll move on into the urban design policies. Just to follow up on one piece of public comment regarding House Bill 2001. So, that was passed by the legislature this past summer, just a few months ago, right on the final day of the session. And it basically says that cities either over 25,000 or if they're under that within the metropolitan region are required to outright allow duplexes on every lot in the city that allows for detached single-family residences. And then you must allow for other middle housing options, namely triplexes, fourplexes, and cottage cluster developments. They have to be allowed in at least part of every zone that allows for detached single-family residences. So, it doesn't say that you have to allow all of these middle housing options on every single property in the city. You can choose to have it focused within certain parts of each zone. You could have it on corridors. There are different ways to implement it. And so, as far as some of the concerns about the state kind of having a very top-heavy approach to land use planning, there is definitely a strong central role in the state of Oregon in land use planning, but there was definitely some pushback from the League of Oregon Cities and from others that expressed similar concerns and wanted to have the flexibility within House Bill 2001. So, it does allow cities to implement the bill in a variety of different ways. And I think we're very much ahead of the game in that we have largely started to update most of our comprehensive plan policies. We've been pinning them down by resolution as we go along. The housing policies were pinned down in July. And so, we are ready to kind of move on to the next steps to discuss how we actually implement our comprehensive plan policies and our community vision, which call for a wider variety of different housing types throughout all neighborhoods that represent all different income levels and all different housing types. So, I think...
David, wouldn't you know where the audience can find those housing policies that are pinned down already?
Yeah. So, we have a project website, which is milwaukieplan.com. It redirects to the city page, and we've been updating the page. Just at the very top of the main page, I believe there's links to all of the policies that have been pinned down. Block one, which was pinned down in kind of mid-2018. Block two was pinned down in early 2019. The housing policies, which had been separated from block two so that we could focus more on housing, were pinned down in July. And then the block three policies, with the exception of the urban design policies that we'll be discussing tonight, those were pinned down just last Tuesday, August 20th. And so, that's milwaukieplan.com, one word. And yeah, we try to keep that as, as updated as possible. So, with that, I've touched on a little bit of this, but we've been working on the comp plan for about two years. That followed an additional year that we had worked on the community vision, which was adopted in September 2017. As I mentioned, council has been pinning down the policies where they basically are saying that, yes, we agree with the general content of these, and they haven't been adopting them by ordinance because we wanted to have what's called the synthesis stage at the end, which we're just doing now, where we're reviewing all of the different policies, kind of examining them for redundancies, making sure that they're consistent. And so, our plan is moving forward. We will be, just to provide a little bit more clarity, is, as opposed to updating all of the policies, all of the maps, all of the supporting documents at once, we're focusing on updating the policy documents, so the comprehensive plan policies. And then basically, we were, the plan is to adopt that policy document by the end of 2019, at which point we'll start looking at any potential amendments to the comprehensive plan land use map and concurrently any potential amendments to the zoning map. And then that will lead into potential amendments to the development code, which will tackle things like House Bill 2001 compliance, you know, potential changes to the tree code, all different types of things that are regulated through the development code and other titles. We're just working on our work plan right now. There are a lot of things that need to be updated, and we're a pretty small city, so we're trying to be strategic in how we plan out the updates. So, we're working on that now.
We had done an initial draft that outlined a two-year work program for this, and we've been asked to, it's very aggressive two-year work program, and we've been asked to stretch it to a three-year work program. So, at some point here in the next month or two, you will see that. It's not worked out yet.
So, can I just note, so it's, I mean, really the comprehensive planning process is like a five-year deal, right? I mean, because two years to get your policies and then three years to update all of the codes in line with the policies.
Well, as you know, we've outlined a lot of different policies through the process that call out different types of projects and different types of corrections we're supposed to make, and that, that's the roadmap. One thing that David, you went past, I wanted to add to, was that tonight's urban design policies and the discussion about urban design policies, we're not planning on taking that back through the same process that we had with the other policies where we pinned them down. We're planning on just rolling them directly into the synthesis process, so any formal changes to that will be caught through that. We've, if to stay on track, to try to get everything adopted by the end of the year, that would slow us down for a couple more meetings.
And their urban design, just by nature, kind of captures a lot of the different chapters, so it makes sense for it to go last. It brings in things like transportation, like the, how the built environment intersects with the natural environment. And we've obviously been dealing a lot with natural resources, environmental quality, how that influences the built environment. So, if there was going to be a chapter that kind of finished things up, it's actually worked out pretty well that it's urban design. So, yeah, as, as I mentioned, we'll be, we're just, we're working on our work plan right now. There's a lot of different items on that work plan, and so we're going to be refining that, and we'll make sure to keep the Planning Commission updated. Just a little bit on the community engagement that we've done, just, this is, I think, a good opportunity as we're kind of winding down on the comp plan, just to kind of look back at, at all the different things that we've done. So, we have a comprehensive plan advisory committee, which Chair Travis is a member for, a member of. So, once in future. But, we've had 21 meetings over the last 21 months, including six that were focused on housing. And like all the other materials, we try to make everything available on milwaukieplan.com. With each block of work, we've had either a town hall or an open house, as well as an accompanying online open house or online survey. We've had generally between 60, 220 people at the in-person events and between 100 and 300 people that have responded to the online versions of those events. We've been updating the council and the Planning Commission with work sessions similar to this. We've already had a couple on the other block three policies that we had with the Planning Commission, and this will actually be our third of block three. And then we've been trying our best, and we're the first to acknowledge that there are always, always places that we can improve on our outreach, but we've been trying to utilize the different resources that are available to us. City website, the pilot, we've developed a pretty comprehensive email list of people that have attended events or have sent me an email to say that they're interested in learning more about the comp plan. Social media, and then kind of more traditional print materials that we've handed out at the library, First Friday, different places where there have been city booths or places that where we can lay out materials. So, with that, just to kind of zero in on the urban design policies, which is our main reason for being here tonight. As I said, these were split off from the rest of block three, for whatever reason. I think just sequentially where they're at in the packet typically at the end. We've had a number of meetings with the CPAC and the Planning Commission and the council where we just didn't get to them, so we definitely needed some additional time. So, it's good that we're having a specific work session on these. There'll be a new chapter. They don't exist in the existing plan. There are a lot of different elements of urban design that are spread out across housing and land use, economic development, natural resources, but we wanted to try to bring them all into one place. And so, just looking at your packet, it's pretty much the only thing in there besides the minutes, but there's both a track changes version that starts on 6.1, page eight. And then, I think they're, actually, and then the clean version, which starts on 6.1, page three. So, there aren't a huge number. The, one of the, kind of the main areas where there's been some significant changes is in policy 3.4, so goal three, policy four. And I know that this is, it seems like this has been a source of some confusion in the community as far as what this map means. So, this is, basically, this was produced in response to some feedback from the Planning Commission and the CPAC and the council in, as far as we had the language within policy 3.4, but we were asked to basically show it visually, what that actually meant and which areas would be qualified under these locational criteria. So, going back, that map, it's not meant to, it's meant to show areas that would be eligible for rezoning, well, for changing their comprehensive plan land use designation to either medium density or high density. You need to change your land use designation in the comp plan before you can change your implementing zoning. So, this was meant to show areas that if we went to a more locationally-based criteria as far as proximity to transit, proximity to parks and other services, what are some of the areas that would be eligible if individual property owners... of the areas that would be eligible if individual property owners decided that, hey, I would like to develop a different type of housing? So they are generally focused more along arterials, along transit routes, near parks, all the types of things that you would hope would, you know, be amenable to higher density developments and help to serve that population. And just talking a little bit, just that last bullet point, House Bill 2001, what, as it's proposed, and we still need to implement that, but basically, a lot of the middle housing types that aren't currently allowed in some of the zones that are shown in the pink and the orange, because they're low density right now, you know, triplexes, fourplexes, several of those potentially could already be allowed, which would probably reduce the need to do any sort of rezoning. So I just wanted to touch on that briefly. Just as far as what went into the creation of that map, I don't know if you can see everything, but these are just the different layers that then were basically aggregated. So we have areas that are frequent transit and, you know, within a quarter-mile buffer of frequent transit. This shows all the areas within a quarter-mile of a public park or school. This shows areas within a quarter-mile of the commercial services-
Or hubs.
Or hubs. And then, basically, what that led to was areas, this is specifically for high density, areas eligible for zone changes to high density. So a lot of these areas up in here, like, for example, here, within the North Milwaukee Innovation Area, high density is actually already allowed in the area next to Tacoma Station, so that probably wouldn't happen, so that's a big chunk of it. So we just wanted to give a little bit more background on how that map was created and try to address some of the confusion, that it's not meant to show places that the city's proposing to rezone at this point. It's areas that if we do go to this proposed locational criteria for zoning changes, that those are areas that hypothetically could be included.
May I ask some specific questions towards this map?
Yeah.
Can you define what a frequent transit is? I understand, I see, I can see, I get the light rail stops, but then I am confused what is up north there at Johnson Creek, what makes that a frequent transit stop?
So it would be places with either light rail or bus lines that have, I believe, a 15-minute headway?
15-minute headway is the, is the definition of that.
Correct.
It includes regional trails, too. That's the lineup there on Johnson Creek, it's the regional trail.
Oh, so the Spring Water Trail is considered a frequent?
No, it's part of the criteria in the policy.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, what is considered a commercial service? Is it one store, or is it a group of stores, or is it?
It's properties that are currently already zoned to allow commercial uses, or any of our proposed hub locations.
Okay, so one property, so I think of like the store on Home Avenue in Monroe. You can draw a quarter-mile of a circle around that one, even though that it's only one type of store. It's not a group of stores or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, David. You know, I understand the eligible caveat that you mentioned, but, you know, I was, my question is about the, about the high-density and medium-density streets. And so when I looked at the map, I saw that like Harrison was a eligible for medium-density, you know, corridor, and Monroe was a high eligible for high-density. So I just, you know, I'm just trying to understand that. And I understand that these are eligible, but I'm just trying to understand the algorithm or whatever that spits out something like that.
I think it's parks that are missing from the Harrison. Look at the green, the upper right-hand corner there, the map up here?
Yep, okay.
So Harrison's missing the park element. So we're not, I don't, and I'm not saying-
I understand.
What we have here is perfect, right?
Understand.
So part of this exercise, I think, was to highlight, does this work? Does this make sense? And I would tend to think that that's a, that is an area where one might expect to see higher density, because it's closer to more commercial services.
Right.
Yeah.
And so I also have a technical question about the comp plan. If this is put into the comp plan, and if I was a developer, couldn't I challenge that the way that you wrote what would be high-density or what would be medium-density should be zoned that anyway, so I should be allowed to build there?
No, because there's many other criteria that need to be evaluated, just in terms of suitability, in terms of need. Some of it depends on what do we put into the zone change comp plan criteria?
So does zone change supersede what is the overall vision in the comp plan?
No, it should be consistent.
Well, so that's where my question comes, is that we talk about, oh, well, we're not, and I, we don't know what the definition of high-density is, or medium-density, or low-density either.
They aren't only-
But the question, my question is, is that if, let's say you're going to leave the corner of Monroe and Linwood, an R7 zone, right? But it's medium-density, which means that it should be an R2 zone. If that doesn't match up with your comp plan, aren't you in creating conflicts? Do you understand what I mean?
No.
If you, if you keep the zone as a low-density, but your comp plan says that it's eligible for medium or high-density, doesn't that come-
But another way to think about this, and I was thinking this might be a way out of this conundrum, if it, if it does present itself to be a conundrum, is to think of these as the zone change criteria. What do you need, what do you need to do to satisfy and make findings to grant a zone change? And we, we put specific distances in here, but it could be proximity to. So instead of a quarter-mile, you could use the term proximity to a park, proximity to commercial services. The problem there is there is a greater amount of discretion.
Right.
What do we mean by proximity? Do we mean next to? Do we mean walking distance? And what, what we attempted to do with this exercise, I think, is put that easy walking distance, a quarter-mile, into the policy to sort of see what it looks like. And thank you, Commissioner Himmer, for asking for the map. And I think it, it, but I, I think it's just open for some additional discussion and thought about how do you craft this? It doesn't have to be this way, where we're doing a quarter-mile, but the intent was trying to be a little bit more specific about those areas where you might think it's appropriate. There's still other criteria that you'd need to satisfy. It would need, it would be those discretionary criteria. This was just a screen of eligible areas. Another way to look at it is, the areas that aren't highlighted can't be changed to high-density or-
Right, but a developer could walk in using the comp plan with this language in it. And let's say, so I like using examples, and I know that the mobile home is probably, technically, the mobile home park on King Road is probably, technically, in Clackamas County, but let's just assume that it's in the city of Milwaukee. That they say, oh, well, we could do medium-density here, and I don't know what medium-density is, but let's just say it's a, let's just assume it's, I don't know, 200 units per acre, or whatever the definition is.
David, can you go to the next slide?
Yeah, so we could-
Yeah.
Right, but-
Hold on.
Okay. All right, so-
Thank you. Facts.
But somebody, somebody could walk in, right, and say, hey, I want to put this in so I can go in for a zone change, and the findings would be, what is listed here, would give them the reason for the zone change, correct?
It would be factored in. When someone applies for a quasi-judicial application, like a rezone, there are approval criteria, and one of them would be consistency with the comprehensive plan. That's just part of it. You still then need to meet all the other approval criteria. You need to evaluate the project in the case of rezones for residential, you have to comply with the metropolitan, with this metropolitan transportation rule, as far as evaluating impacts from, you know, upzoning effectively. And so there are a whole lot of other things that are factored in when you're evaluating a zone change application.
So this is just one small piece of the puzzle?
It's part of it, yeah. It's basically establishing the eligible, you know, the properties that are eligible, and then they still have to go through the process to actually propose a zone change. So they would have to basically, so for example, the, if you look at this chart, this is our current comprehensive plan, and so we have what's called moderate density, which the only implementing zone is the R5. So if someone wanted to change that under our current zoning code to R2, R2 and a half, or R3, they can't just do a zone change, they have to do a comprehensive plan land use amendment and, as well, where you have to change the comp plan land use designation. So we have two different maps. We have the comp plan land use map, and then that's implemented through the zoning map. And so the comp plan land use map has terms like moderate, you know, density, medium-density, high-density, and then the zoning map has R1, R2, R3. So you have to choose both. When you're jumping from one category of comp plan land use designation to another, you have to change your comp plan designation first, before you can change your zoning designation.
Oh, okay, I got you.
I just looked up the criteria for a map amendment. It's, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan. So there's, there's one. The second one, the proposed amendment is in the public interest with regard to neighborhood or community conditions. Little bit of discretion there. The public, number three, the public need is best satisfied by this particular proposed amendment, so you have to demonstrate that there's some need for this change. The fourth one, the proposed amendment is consistent with metro urban growth management functional plan and relevant regional policies. So there's some transportation-related rules that you need to address there. And the final one is that the proposed amendment is consistent with relevant state statutes and administrative rules, including the state planning goals and the transportation planning rule. So there are many, many hurdles that one really has to go through if you are doing a plan amendment and zone change. We've done plan amendments and zone changes, and, you know, if there is opposition to that, the bar gets higher, essentially. You're, you're going to hold somebody to a higher test, generally. So it's a, there's, there is discretion involved, though. It's not just the-
And all those zone changes, it is a type three or a type four review process, and there's a high amount of public call-out for that?
Correct. Every zone change has to at least come to the planning commission.
This is such a good educational opportunity. This is good. It's complicated.
It is.
You know, and we've been, how long have you been a planning commissioner?
My wife says forever.
Still learning.
But at least five or six years. Well, I just wanted to make sure that, because I, especially for the people in the audience that may not quite understand it, that, that this map does not mean that all of this, if economic pressures are high enough, that all of this can turn very quickly.
Well, and I would say it's similar to House Bill 2001 implementation, you know, as mandated by state law. You know, we were already planning on doing some of this work. The vision calls for allowing for more middle housing types throughout the city. But House Bill 2001, you know, if it requires it in all zones, that doesn't mean that it's going to happen overnight, and it probably won't. You know, the higher the improved value of a relatively small parcel, the less likely it is to obviously be torn down. And so we are, we're, we are reliant on infill to accommodate growth. We're not Happy Valley, we're not Hillsborough. And so, you know, our, our projected growth is, you know, at least based on estimates from metro and from the state and Portland State, are relatively low, because they look backwards where we've had very little growth. And we're starting to experience some of that growth now, and so, you know, we're going to need to really be on top of it as far as, you know, planning and updating our plans and, and, you know, analyzing our infrastructure constraints. And we're just starting the master planning process for water and wastewater. And so a lot of these things are aligning pretty well, because if we are going to grow, it's going to be growing within, you know, our current boundaries. Even areas within our urban growth management area are urbanized, so it's not, other than the area just east of Linwood, that's pretty much the only area that's really still a greenfield anywhere within our, within our UGMA. And so, yeah, we're going to need to be, you know, there's a lot of work coming up for you guys as we get into the development code work as well, so.
Well, and so I don't want to nitpick on this map, and I'm sorry if I'm-
We're still here.
-bothering anybody, but, so we have greenway plans out there. Monroe is one of them, 29th is one of them, Stanley, for some unknown reason, is still one of them. So did, were those considerations taking into when we're calling a high-density eligible collector arterial? I mean, should Monroe, if you have a plan for it being a greenway, be a high collector?
We didn't take into account greenways, but that's something we can look into.
I would suggest that maybe, you know, I mean, it's a chicken and an egg, but you either got to, you, if you want to make it a high collector, then maybe you need to remove the greenway status from it, or, you know, modify it as a possible greenway or something like that for an identifier.
Well, I mean, they're all considered arterials or collectors, so they, they are still met in the criteria, being considered the street classification for it.
Stanley and Monroe are the only two that are at a collector level.
And, yeah.
And I think as we go back into the TSP, we'll have to reevaluate whether or not Monroe should continue as a collector. Stanley, I'm not sure how we, I mean, it's, it's a tough, that's a tough one. We need to spend some time thinking about how that Stanley greenway works.
And when is the TSP update?
We are hoping to start it next year.
That's the transportation system plan?
System plan, yep.
The, but that would, if you take the collector status away from Monroe on this, does that reduce the densities along it? It probably would, in this model.
Good questions.
I just didn't know if there was a conflict, a true conflict with that, so.
Good questions. So are we going to go through, are you just telling us the changes, or are we going to go through?
I was, the only one that I called out in the slideshow was this policy four under goal three.
Okay.
And the rest of the slides are just kind of touching on the density, which I think we've largely already tackled. I could scroll through them, they just have some of the definitions, which I think we've already largely gone into. We just, if, for people that want to see it, this is just a little bit more that's included within our current comprehensive plan, as far as the way that low-density, moderate-density, medium-density, high-density are defined.
And so isn't our current plant, or didn't our housing basically combine low-density and moderate-density together?
Say that again, as far as-
Didn't, if I remember the right, when we went through the housing, it basically allowed duplexes and ADUs throughout the residential zones, correct?
Well, I mean, it encourages, and, you know, it has a lot of different language as far as where to focus different types of housing, how to accommodate higher-density housing in areas that are appropriate for it, and then to expand middle housing opportunities. So I, if you could consider that kind of meshing, you know, the low-density and medium-density together as far as there being uses that traditionally have only been allowed.
Well, low and moderate, and so, right, we didn't, we don't have moderate on our map, or moderate in our, in the comp plan, so is that a proper term? Or do we need to add it?
Well, I think our plan, and I would let Denny weigh in on this, as far as, would be, the moderate right now is just the R5, and the R5 pretty much now operates as a low. It's got pretty much the same look as the R7 or even the R10, just a lot sizes are smaller. I think that we could get rid of the moderate.
Okay.
And then just scrolling through these a little bit more, just medium-density, high-density, so high-density being predominantly multifamily. And yeah, when you think of medium-density, that allows up to 21 units per acre, that, that's not predominantly duplexes, that would be something higher than that. So there's a little bit of a disconnect between our definitions and- So there's a little bit of a disconnect between our definitions and what the intent of those land use designations are.
What the actual zones allow.
What the zones actually allow, the implementing zones. And then there's a separate high density within mixed use areas where not just high density residential, but also commercial and office. And so these touch on the locational criteria that are included within goal three, policy four. The same things that are included in the actual policy language. And, you know, based on your feedback, we're happy to, to look at these. I think the comment on, on Stanley and on Monroe, you know, are things that we need to look at.
And 29th.
Yeah. And so 29th is not really an active Greenway. We haven't looked at it much. We were just discussing it earlier today. I know it was referenced in the TSP, but we need to, you know, have further discussions with the engineering department on, on kind of what the plans are. And obviously, the Hillside project is kind of bringing that to the, to the forefront.
Can I ask one more question before?
Yeah.
So there was a discussion on what is a park? And is it open spaces? Are you getting to this later in here?
I am not touching on the parks yet, so.
So did we come up with a definition, or was there a discussion about what is a park? I mean, like, is Minthorn natural area, is that considered a park or an open space, or does it qualify, or doesn't it qualify?
Anything that was considered public park slash open space slash natural area was in that green, you can see is, is there. But I didn't have any data on what is considered a private park, so I only used our, our public data that we have.
Oh, so you may not have included a church property that has...
Correct.
A community garden and a playground on it.
Yeah, correct.
But you considered schools to be public spaces that can be used during non-school hours?
Schools were all included, yeah.
Okay.
And then, so, yeah, just kind of recapping some of what we've discussed, you know, specifically related to this policy, it would be only for those wanting to, to propose to rezone their property. You know, we, there's going to be, you know, issues related to House Bill 2001 where we're going to be concurrently, you know, looking at what we need to do to amend our development code to be consistent with that. And, you know, code changes would not occur, you know, until much after we need to go through the comp plan policy adoption. So with that, if there are questions on either that specific policy or on any of the urban design policies, I would open it up for discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think let's start, let's start with goal three since we're there, and then we can work backwards. Does that sound okay, since?
I don't think so.
We already got Greg's questions for that, and I'm just...
Oh, no, no, not yet.
But, so let's start with goal three questions, and then we'll go to start at goal one. Anybody ready?
Yeah, and so I have a question about the, the two-track design review process and a clear objective process. So it's, it, it seems to me that the public has more of a general interest, and what happens is, is that mainly the public is worried about what I'm going to call traffic and safety. So traffic is the amount of cars that are getting entered into the system, how they're going to get around the system. And parking is part of this traffic. And then the other one is safety, and the reason why, and I'm going to use my blueberry example. If you buy a bunch of blueberries and one is moldy, statistically would tell you, if you buy a basket of blueberries and one is always moldy, statistics would tell you that if you buy 10 of them, 10 of them will be moldy throughout your batch. And so that just means the more people that you add in, the more possibility you have for one more bad character walking in, right? Which then creates a safety issue. So my question is, is that if we streamline this process where it only becomes a type 2, and it doesn't really get out into the public where they can review it, is there a way that we can ask the developer to at least go to the NDA meeting after they submit their plans, but before notice of the type 2 goes out? Is there a way that we can actually ask that developer to go to the NDA first, get those public comments? And I realize that, you know, we don't need to spend the expense of that, but add that in, add that in as a criteria.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can add that. That's definitely something that you could add to the code as a step where somebody has to go meet with the, the NDA.
But it doesn't, I mean, this is a policy that would then get implemented through code.
Correct.
The items that you're adding.
That would be, that would be a code process and not something to put in a goal three process?
Well, you could, you could, you could put it in as a, as a separate policy that would say that design a, design a review process that includes outreach to the NDAs prior to submittal, you know, something on that order.
I mean, I think...
Prior to application submittal.
I think if, you know, when we open up design review in the code, that gives us opportunity to think about maybe a multitude of things that we might want to include, you know? So, I mean, and maybe that's an opportunity, or it is an opportunity, engage the NDAs and the land use chairs in particular.
Right, my, my point is, is that this is about process, right? And we certainly lay out processes for clear and objective processes, which means that if it's zoned high density or even medium density, that the public would not really be notified until the type 2 decision is being made. The type 2 decision is kind of a closed door, even though that, you know, you can send in public comment to the planning director. I'm just asking to include maybe a little bit more of a open public process without making it a type 3. And so my thinking was, was that, well, if you could get into the, if we could write in this process somewhere that, that they get to meet with the NDA, and my suggestion would be after submittal, but before the, before the notice for type 2 begins, would be a way to be able to put that, and I, and I would, I think that it should be included in at least the process portion of this.
Well, I think it makes more sense for that to happen in advance of submittal, because then they still have an opportunity to change their application.
Oh, okay, all right.
Before it, before it gets submitted. Lake Oswego does this. I mean, you've got to, you've got to submit the notes from the NDA meeting that you held as part of your application. So it's not unheard of that this is a, it's a, it's a process that some communities use. We encourage people to do it, and we've had people do it. The Elk Rock Estates project is one where they went and met with the NDA. I think there was a pretty big gap between when they met and when they filed.
Well, and that's, and that's where the catch 22 comes, is that they, they do come in before submittal, and it could be a year before that, and, you know, so then nobody really hears about it, and nobody keeps on top of it, and then all of a sudden, boom, it's getting noticed, and then, or all of a sudden it's getting built, and people are saying, oh, well, I wasn't notified. That's why I was kind of, I was putting that timeline of the submittal of it, but I understand, you know, maybe there's, maybe we ask for two meetings or after pre-application or something like that. I mean, I don't know how that...
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't, I, I agree with everything you've said, but, you know, I'm just trying to think through this. Doesn't, you know, that become codified someplace in the, the three-year work plan? Whereas we're at the goal stage where we need to say something like, you know, we, we want it, you know, codified somehow that community, you know, engagement occur.
Well, as opposed to getting into specifics, I mean, at the comp plan level, you would talk about expanding opportunities for early public engagement, something like...
That's certainly a worthy goal.
Along that.
Yeah.
And this is something that came up in the natural resources section as well as from some of the different nonprofit environmental organizations that have said, you know, if we just had learned about the project a little bit earlier, we could have provided our, our, kind of our technical expertise before they even filed. And so I think if the planning commission or the CPAC or others would like to propose that, it would then be implemented within the development code where you get into the specifics. I think it'll be important to kind of establish and temper expectations, especially if somebody, if an applicant is able to meet the clear and objective standards. There can be some frustration when people take a lot of time to provide all of this feedback, and then they're able to meet the clear and objective standards, they have a traffic study that shows adequate mitigation, they're not impacting natural resources, and if they're, because they're deemed needed housing and they meet the clear and objective standards, they need to be approved. And so it would take a lot, you know, we would just need to engage the community more and have some additional education about, you know, establishing and managing those expectations as far as, you know, what their role is and, you know, what their requirements are from the applicant as far as responding to their comments, so.
Are these, are the NDAs already offered the opportunity to comment for pre-application conferences?
Generally not at the pre-application conference stage.
They're routed when, at the application stage for...
When it activates.
Yeah, and so, yeah, for, for the type 2s and type 3s, they, they do get notification of that.
But not at the pre-application?
Not at the pre-application stage, and so, you know, that's something that we could explore. I mean, the thing with the pre-app is it's obviously not a, a real project yet, and so if there's a way to offer the opportunity, knowing, I mean, we've had a lot of pre- apps that just go nowhere.
And they can just be exploratory, but it's an opportunity to engage the public about what they, how, how they feel about a particular site.
I would consider that may produce some angst on the applicant side, but...
It may.
I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but we have to consider...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, when you get some comments from the public early enough in the process to affect the trajectory of the outcome, that just seems like a good opportunity, you know, that's the opportunity that you'd want to offer to, to, to collect some feedback, some visionary type feedback, before you go in and start, you know, paying someone to produce plans.
There's a buying element.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot cheaper to get it when the vision is going than it is to do it after the fact.
So, I mean, my concern goes back to goal one, I guess, and, you know, kind of measuring engagement. So if we sign, if it's like, oh, they went to the NDA, but only five people were there, I mean, we're still going to have the same problem with people not knowing, so, you know, that's...
Right, well, what we need to do is we need to encourage the citizenship to at least sign up for their emails from their NDA and to read them. And, and then that way they can attend the meetings that, that they want, and that should, you know, that falls into the goal one policy for sure. And, I mean, there's only so much outreach you can do, but at least with these clear, my only worry is, is that with these clear and objective standards, it's, what happens is, is that because it's a type 2 review in the end, it's, it's done behind closed doors, and there's no way for, except via email or written comment to the planning director. You know, there, I would just like to be there, conversation between the community and the developer, especially because of the issues of traffic and, and safety, which seems to be the overriding. The last six hearings that we had, that people were worried about density, it's been about traffic, and it's been about safety, and that's really it.
But don't lose track of the fact that there's a state law that requires a clear and objective process for certain housing types.
I, I, and I'm not saying that it's, and I'm not saying that it should be for a single family, I'm just saying that if, you know, if you're doing a, a high density or a medium density project, you know...
Where it's allowed by right.
But that's where, that's where you have to provide a clear and objective path.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
But at least the citizens would be able to come in and give their comments on what a clear and projective path is during this, during the code amendments. And then, but if there's one that is out of the norm, or one that is going from medium to high or something like that, and then, or a really large scale.
I think I should, I should point out that this policy is really, in a sense, a backfilling policy. It's putting a policy in the plan for something we already do in complying with state law. So there is a, there is a requirement that we have a clear and objective path for any...
I would just like to see any higher medium density project that goes through at least talk to the NDA.
I see no harm in that. That's a great way of getting some additional input.
So you're not talking about changing the zoning, you're talking about, for example, the...
Yeah, the zoning change is, is a huge public process.
Yeah.
But, but if you have a higher medium density project, the developer, you know, should be required to meet with the NDA to get public feedback.
So we would need to, I guess, establish some density threshold as far as what qualifies for, for that.
Well, you have it by definition.
Well, we do. I mean, but within, yeah, you could either do it, I mean, somebody can be within a medium density zone and build, you know, towards the minimum and not be triggering that, or, you know, say they have a medium, and R3's development, that they just want to...
When we get to the code part, we can hash that out, but I would just like a general statement, something like that.
I think there is a lot of that to hash out. I mean, I do think that this will be a very meaty discussion when we get to implement it, so. Thanks for explaining that for us. I just had a question on number two, in that when it's about the clear and objective process is available for all needed housing types that is well-designed, does that mean that, are you connecting that to the design policies? Or, like, what do you mean well-designed? Is it within, so does that, I guess when I read that, I'm like, okay, so it has to meet, if it's downtown, that, and it meets the, all, the A through G policies there, then that means it's well-designed?
Well, the, the well-designed and being qualified for the clear and objective means that they would, we would have design standards that they would meet as opposed to design guidelines where there's, it becomes a more subjective process, so.
Okay.
If you're talking about needed housing types that are well-designed...
That one, yeah.
They have to be, so you have to have basically a housing project that clearly meets our design standards to be eligible for that. And again, that's kind of backfilling what we already do.
We're assuming, we're assuming that our standards create something that's well-designed in this policy.
Okay.
You know, I, but I understand your concern.
I was just trying to understand what that was linked to, but it's, it's linked to the design policies, so.
Well, can't you just say meets design policies instead of...
Well-designed.
Well-designed.
Yeah.
That meets design policies, yeah. That would, that would take care of my thing.
I think it's standards is probably the word.
Design standards, yeah. Because those are adopted.
Mm-hmm.
You ready? You're good?
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Anybody else on three? Goal three?
So is there no such thing as low-density districts?
It's everything that's not pink or orange.
Okay.
Or that's not already...
It's in the absence of, okay.
Right, or that's not already zoned for...
Anything, anything zoned above R3 currently, right?
Any residential property.
Right.
We very seldom see an application for someone to downzone their property also from a multifamily to a single family.
You have to show how you're going to make up for that lost capacity.
Right.
Unless you're a certain city to the east of us, but...
Wow. Zing. All right, well then, let's move backward to goal one, and then, then there's goal two. So three goals total in the draft urban design and land use policies. We try not to wordsmith in this environment, but under downtown Milwaukee policies, B, you know, using the word excellent, I'm not really sure, supports excellent access.
Oh, B.
Room for interpretation.
Okay.
And then, I mean, I, I appreciate the... And then, um, I mean, I, I appreciate the, and C is, um, you know, pretty geeky and I like it, but, you know, with the split, our mode split targets, which I don't know what that is, but I'm, it's probably gonna be part of the glossary that's part of this, but...
Or even a call-out box.
A call-out box, that, those are also good.
But can we hear what it is?
But yeah, can you tell us what mode split targets are?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Sure. So that means that in your use of a, of a public right-of-way space, that's, that's a convening of transportation, you know, on a street or roadway facility, let's go with facility, that you are designing to and classifying to accommodate modes that would meet certain amounts of the type of trip by that mode in a given, in some given timeframe. So some jurisdictions do it as, well, we wanna now achieve a, a, an increased split or an increased share of all trips done by foot to X percent, bicycle X percent, Y percent, transit Z percent. You, you can have targets too for vehicle, vehicles or just say, well, instead we'll go after, there's already standard targets called VC ratio, for instance, or ADT, average daily traffic. You could say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna reduce where those might already have, um, you know, thresholds now. You could say, well, we're gonna target, or you could just say percentage of those trips too, but that is what it is.
Okay, and so that happens, it, like, where does the city establish those targets? And like, where does that...
It's gonna be in the...
In the TSP?
It would be in the TSP.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be subject to metro and state...
Yeah.
Policy review, or policy review, but in process, but...
That's really helpful to understand.
But you absolutely can do that.
Okay.
You can adopt them. What other jurisdictions do?
Yeah, okay, that's really helpful, okay. I'm done, mine. Anybody on goal one?
I have a general question on, on six in the International Way Business District. What is the degree that we have an interface with Portland here? The degree of interface with Portland at, you know, up around the Tacoma Transit Station?
Well, this one, International Way is the area out on 224 and...
So it's all Milwaukee?
So North Milwaukee Innovation Area policies are the, the ones that would be for the north industrial area. And there was re, two years ago, two years ago, the city adopted a North Milwaukee Innovation Area Plan that spells out many more policies than this. And that plan really will become an ancillary document to the comp plan. It was adopted recently enough that it'll just fit in.
I'm sorry, I referred to the wrong section. I meant five.
Yeah.
North Milwaukee.
That's what I thought, and that's kind of what I was just addressing.
Okay.
Was that there was a plan done a couple of years ago and item five D says implement those provisions, the, the policies that are in that plan. So the other, the other three policies are just general policies that sort of capture sort of the tone of that document, the types of things that it was addressing. Your question though was about the relationship to, to Portland and, and as we did the North Milwaukee Innovation Area Plan, there were Portland staff members that attended our meetings, or one anyway, that attended our meetings. So there was some coordination with Portland staff over that. Not a lot more than that, though.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I was particularly curious about the Tacoma Station interface.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, just the, the station itself is in the city of Portland.
Yep.
We have Tacoma Station designation that allows for a very broad mix of uses right up there, ranging from housing to commercial to some light manufacturing.
Right, okay, thank you.
In that quarter mile of the station, basically, half mile, I think.
I have a, yep.
Oh, you have a question?
I have a question.
You do your question.
It's, it should be a pretty easy one. What, so the Clackamas Regional Center, this is under Regional Center policies? I'm not familiar with that.
It's the Clackamas Town Center.
Oh, Clackamas Town Center.
That was Commissioner Eds's addition to this.
Assuming, assuming that at some point...
The blue ones were.
The city annexes, we were trying to be ready for that.
Oh, got it, okay.
We need to be prepared and deliberate about, you know, land that is going to, could possibly come into the city. It will, needs to get a land use designation that's, you know, consistent with our comprehensive plan, land use map. And so if those, any of those properties get annexed in, then they need to have a comparable zoning designation, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are we allowed to talk a little bit of slight wording? Is that okay? International Way Business District Policy E, being well-served by transit or microtransit, I would simply change that to say public transportation options. There are several things and they're somewhat even embryonic. Microtransit is right now being hotly debated as, is it, is it any good or not? So in 10 years, we may not necessarily see that as a business model, I don't know.
What is microtransit?
It is, it is typically 12 to 15 passenger vehicles. They, in the world of automated connected vehicle technology, they are looked at as a pretty nice application to provide what's called first-last-mile connections for those areas that just don't really get good, reliable transit for various reasons that are usually related to their land use situation. So microtransit is, it can be a solution, but so could whatever the heck comes down the pipe. That could mean electric scooter convoys, I don't know. But I think public transportation options would be the better thing to capture here.
So that should be public as opposed to...
Yeah, I would say public, because you, you, you don't say public, you're opening up that a ride-hailing company is gonna get to eat up public realm that provides public transportation services for people who need it.
Invasion of the Google buses.
So I, I will, that's, that's just my suggestion.
So is personal rapid transit considered nano-transit?
Duh, micromobility is one of the terms.
I'm really happy with everything I see.
You're really happy, yeah, I mean, I'm really happy to...
But this is great. We're really getting there.
I love this chapter.
Yeah, we're really getting there.
It's like, I love it. It's great.
Getting on a soapbox.
We'll discuss it on the next Thursday as well.
Yes, we get to do it again. But I do have a question, now, I've got a lot of red marks around here, but the one I am curious about, and I've been curious as, as neighborhood mixed use, so number three, D, ensure that new mixed use in commercial buildings provide a commercial storefront And I guess, you know what, never mind, I've answered my question. Yeah, never mind, just in rereading it, I get it now. It's really about the pedestrian-focused. I was, I was getting a little bit mixed up with this, but reading out loud and looking at it again, looks good. Okay. All right, you're good with goal one?
Yeah, I'm happy with goal one, so.
You're happy too, okay. What about goal two then? Livability. Enhance livability by establishing urban design concepts and standards that help improve the form and function of the built environment. I really like one H. I love that, I love when we evaluate things and I think that, you know, it's also an opportunity potentially to provide feedback on, on the safe program, right? I mean, if we're doing evaluation. So I think that, that that, I mean, I really appreciate seeing that in there because we put things in place and we don't know if we're getting outcomes that we intended without evaluating, so.
And this enables flexibility in finding a good, the good tools and measures to do so.
Yeah.
So I like it too.
Anybody had any on parking-related design?
I, I do. Again, you know, I brought this up last time, I just wanna bring it up again, that if, you know, we're, the, the opportunity, you know, 2B, so as opportunities arise and encourage redevelopment, oh, conversion of parking, no, that's focusing on parking lots. But, yeah, it doesn't matter, the, the, no, F, I'm sorry, that was, they're very similar. Plan for the conversion, if, you know, if conditions change, basically, instead of data was showing that the parking was excessive in a particular, the amount of parking, available parking was excessive in a certain area, that it could be repurposed for something else. And it specifically calls out these shared modes of transportation, you know, drop-off areas or whatever. And I think that we just wanted to program some more flexibility into that so that as long as it's meeting the, the purpose of the policies of the comp plan, that it doesn't have to be a shared drop-off location, it could be something else. But as long as it's consistent with the policies of the plan. And, and so that was my hang-up last time and I'm still kind of hung up on it, I just don't, you know, it's similar to calling out the, the, you know, the microtransit, is that you just wanna be general with this so that you leave yourself the flexibility to do the best thing rather than have it be programmed in that you're going to have this very rigid type of response. And so that's, that's where my hesitation comes from.
This feels like somebody has been doing their reading and research that the dynamic use of curb space is a issue of the future, particularly in high-dense urban areas. So I would, I would say if we want to address that, that we have to consider it both as, in terms of how people utilize curb space, but also delivery of goods. Because that's, that's part of what, you know, Amazon, what's their two-day delivery tech prime? They are, you know, they're going big on automated freight, little freight delivery is their next-gen services and they, that is also gonna enable them to do things 24 hours a day. And that cities are looking at that as, well, then we need, since they're gonna value our curb space so much, we're gonna dynamically manage where they can do it, to use it for automated pickup, drop-off of, of goods or, goods, in the same way ride-hailing. So I'm just saying, if we're indeed trying to get at that with this, we need to be at least general left to acknowledge, well, yeah, curbs, curb management is something in the future.
So Commissioner, is your problem with the statement pickup-drop-off areas or shared modes of transportation?
It's, it's very prescribed. The, that, I mean, that combination, both.
Both, but does, if you scratch off pickup-drop-off areas and just put in shared modes of transportation without examples, does that work? Does that get it general enough? So that your statement would be anticipate and plan for the conversion of parking spaces for use of shared modes of transportation as use of shared modes of transportation grows in the community?
There's a restaurant right down the street that does the street seats, you know, and that's parking spaces repurposed for, you know, outdoor seating for a business. I mean, that's just an example, maybe that's not what we want to allow everywhere.
So the statement should just be anticipate and plan for conversion of parking spaces, period?
And I just wanted, the specificity that I wanted was just consistent with the goals and policies of the plan.
Yes, so as consistent with the goals and policies of the plan?
Yeah, because there may be, there may be other, there may be environmental policies that are satisfied by the conversion of a, of a given parking space, there may be economic policies that are satisfied, you know, there, there's different...
So the, what you're saying is this says we can only convert for pickup and drop-off?
For shared mobility.
For shared, right, okay.
What if, what if, I, in B, what if we look at it in B, we might be able to get, do away with F, that by expanding parking lots to parking spaces, you know, so it addresses...
For me, oh, there you go, as opportunities arise and encourage development of existing parking lots, comma, conversion of parking lots for other uses and...
For other uses.
And parking spaces, right?
Yeah.
Cool.
As consistent with goals of the plan.
I think that caveat is helpful.
As consistent with goals of the plan, yeah. Right, I get it. Because then that, with that way it ties into everything and not just...
Whatever someone wants to do with it that's different, right.
Or you could even put a such as at the end and list a few of those things, you know...
Put them in a sidebar.
That too.
And I would like to comment on number five, policies to promote community character. I would just like to say that appreciate A being in there because we have heard public testimony about it. In fact, in the minutes that we approved this very night...
Yes, we have.
A citizen came and, and provided public comment on signage, so just...
That was in that work program that we talked about today. Included that as a high priority item, the draft.
That's great.
I don't know if it'll make it to the high priority list or not.
Yeah, great.
I'd like to keep it there.
So very responsive to, you know, community input, so, good job on that one. But yeah, I think this is really good stuff.
So I have, I have two more that I don't know where they lie.
Okay.
And I don't know if it even fits into this, but it may. So the statement that I wrote down here, and it's, it's cattywampus, so I might need some help. Develop programs where urbanization may create gentrification towards current residents to enable them to stay in the community.
Where's that?
So...
That's a new one, that's not...
Right, that's not, I don't know where it falls, but if, if you look up at, at the North Portland, one of the, one of the criticisms, criticisms was, was that, hey, when you, you know, changed this, entered this urban landscape, you did not provide the community that already lives there an opportunity or some sort of subsidy to be able to still live there. And I guess that's kind of the, and I don't know if that falls into this or if that falls into housing or if it...
Thought we already covered that in housing.
We do have some anti-displacement and gentrification mitigation language within the housing policies.
Okay.
I'll have to look them up, but I think that's a more natural place because that is a very housing-focused issue.
Okay, all right. And then the, the last one I have, and maybe we've already addressed it because of the complications of the, with the rezoning, but just a simple statement that says, develop systems and mechanisms that address traffic and safety before or during an urban, before or during an urbanization area develops. So in other words, if you take someplace like Hillside Manor and they come up with a plan, we should develop plans then to say, okay, well, outside of their scope, what do we need to do to accommodate the traffic and the safety? Just develop a plan doesn't mean that has to be enacted, but, so then that way, if 32nd needs a extra turn lane, right, because you're not really gonna discuss it with the, with what that urban development is, you know, that you can take a look at a wider system instead of just focusing on a narrow section. Does that, any of that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, the, the scope of a TIA, a traffic impact analysis, varies depending on the complexity of the project. And once for something like Hillside where they're going to need to be likely rezoning at least part of it if they want to allow for a community center and some of the high-density housing that they're proposing, at least currently along 32nd, anytime you do a, a zone change, you have... currently along 32nd, anytime you do a rezone change, you have what's called a transportation, the transportation planning rule, where you have to do that analysis, and it tends to extend off-site, you need to look at how the greater transportation system and facilities function.
Right, and even safety, I mean, if you, I don't know how our, how we determine how many police we need for the city, but if you add in 600 residents, does that automatically trigger that maybe you should hire another half of a police officer, or a quarter of a police officer? Or does that mean that you need to get a new vehicle to be able to service the extra density that comes in?
Yeah, we don't currently, for parks and police, we don't, some cities have basically levels of service, where they do it on a per capita basis, we don't have that. So it's basically analyzing growth, you know, and then budgeting for it, you know, when it comes to doing the city's biennial budget.
Yeah, and I don't know if that falls into this, I mean, that's kind of, you know, the concern is, King Road, okay, so, three years ago, King Road, at 5:00 in the afternoon, there were only three or four cars queued there at Linwood. Now, it's backed up all the way up to Stanley, and maybe even sometimes backed up to the church on King Road, or where Mission Park is. And it's not necessarily the density of Milwaukee that causes that, it may be the density of Happy Valley, or the road improvements that Clackamas County made off of Thompson Road. You know, it's hard, it's hard to tell what triggers that, or a failure of 224 that it isn't a multiple. But if you add in 600 more cars, and you just ignore that major artillery to get people out, you know, you should, you should be thinking about this ahead of time, so that you could plan for it and budget for it, or, you understand what I mean?
Yeah, but I think we do that, and I'll tell, I'll try to explain how. The Transportation Systems Plan, which does need to be updated, last updated in 2013, outlines what capital improvement projects we need, what road projects, what intersection projects, we need to make the system, the overall system work. So it includes a lot of different projects, some of which, and then we match up priorities with those projects, with the amount of funding we have to build them. Along with that, there are, with a private development that would come in, there is a transportation impact study essentially that they do, that outlines what impact they're having on that local street system, and whether they need to take responsibility for any of the changes, or any of the improvements, that, one, might be in the, in the capital improvement plan, but two, they may be causing because of that development. So that generally looks at the localized, generally the TIS for a private development looks at the local improvements just around that site, what are they, what are they impacting directly? It doesn't look at the overall system beyond that site.
I guess the point that I'm getting to too, is that if, let's say, the, there is enough citizen backing to urbanize King Road, but when I say urbanize King Road, make it a high-density or a medium-density corridor, that there should be a plan in place to be able, that maybe you could actually do those road, some of those road improvements first, or to anticipate before the population comes, you know, your safety and your traffic, to do some of those improvements first in anticipation of.
Yeah.
So it's kind of both, but...
It varies, I mean, if you're talking about site-specific, then it's a little more limited, as far as the analysis and any proposed mitigation. If you're talking about a city-initiated process, where there was community backing, and people wanted to see more kind of medium-density, or even high-density development along King Road, we would need to, and we're proposing to change the zoning, we would need to do a pretty extensive transportation planning rule analysis, and you would need to propose your mitigation, and talk about how you're going to, you know, accommodate these changes in use. So you would need to do that relatively proactively, you can't just change the zoning without having a plan for your transportation infrastructure.
So is that built into the system naturally, or is it something that's worthwhile throwing into the comp plan?
I mean, it's required by state law, that you need to look at these things, you know, especially specifically within the metropolitan region. And then I would also say that, especially in an area like King and Linwood, where it transitions to the county, and then further east to Happy Valley, that is an area where we need to have, you know, good coordination with the county. You know, we haven't had a whole lot of growth along King, I mean, we still haven't had a whole lot of growth, not many units have come online, and that traffic, yeah, I've been here about three and a half years, and it's definitely gotten worse. And so, you know, there is a regional transportation plan through Metro, and we work, you know, in coordination with Clackamas County, as well as with Portland and Multnomah County, just given our location, and so, there are a whole lot of different things that go into transportation planning and transportation coordination, and there's always ways that we can improve, but there are a lot of systems already in place. That's not to say we shouldn't call out things that we think are important, as Denny has mentioned, in other areas, we've kind of backfilled things that we already do, so if we see it as a community priority, that we want to make sure that, you know, we have heard a lot from the community about, you know, concerns about transportation impacts, so it might be a good thing to have a relatively simple policy about, you know, making sure, you know, if we don't have it captured already, if you wanted to propose some additional items.
In the livability section.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a livability, I guess, yeah.
One idea is to tee up where you'll go with the next TSP update, by say, an objective or initiative to identify safety corridors, key safety corridors, and then you utilize either that you, your citizen committee, or you say in there, that staff is allocating resources towards identifying them, and making priority, and tying those, tying whatever priorities you would want, out of a safety corridor-type plan to the TSP, as an element of the TSP. That's something you can do. Speaking of TSP, are you going to go after TGM funding to do it?
We didn't.
You're doing it on your own?
Yep.
Okay. I need to know that.
Yeah, you do.
So we missed the window for TGM funding.
Well, for this year.
For this year.
So, where are we at with this language? Are we, is that okay?
I just wanted to explore this a little further with Commissioner Heimer, or, it's more of a staff-directed question, but on this, on this topic. So, the different roadway designations that we have, are those targeted for, I mean, is there like a range of ADT that we're expecting to accommodate average daily trips, you know, per roadway designation?
Within the TSP, correct, yeah.
Excuse me?
Within the TSP?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, so we're already saying that certain roadway designations should not exceed a certain amount of traffic? I mean, at a policy level.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple ways to address that, right? Is you could take certain actions to depress traffic on a roadway.
Yes.
Or you can continually try to respond and expand the, that road...
Loosen your belt as you gain weight.
Right.
Well, and there, yeah.
No, it's, I mean, I think that's an interesting question, but I mean, the TSP, in essence, evaluates that every time you update it. And we talked earlier about whether Monroe is appropriately designated now as a collector, I'm not sure that it is, if we want to bring the car trips down.
Right.
So...
All you have to do is assign your functional classifications, that is a federal requirement.
Functional, that's the word I was looking for.
Federal functional classifications. You get tools to deal with what you do with them, but you have to identify them.
Yeah, so, I mean, anyway, it's within the realm of livability, you know, where we pick, kind of designate how much traffic a road is supposed to have.
Right.
And if it's getting more than that, then it's a failure of, you know, implementation.
Right, failure of a system, or failure of a, an alternative route, or, yeah.
So, anyway, I think that it's, it's certainly relevant to livability, and I think that, you know, we should be deliberate about saying, you know, what is palatable, traffic-wise, on any given roadway in the city, and when it exceeds that, we should have a response. You know, when it systematically exceeds that, we should have a response, you know, mechanism in place for evaluating that, or, you know, diversion, or, you know, whatever.
Well, and this is one area where, if you, especially for coming up with mode-split targets, I mean, there are different cities that deal with this differently, there are cities that basically let their vehicular level of service fail, because they obviously want...
Right, they want it to be a pain, so that more people...
They want it to be a pain, they want to get people biking, and that's part of their, their methodology for addressing it, tends not to work as well within a suburban setting. But, yeah, there's different ways to deal with this, and different things that need to be considered.
Well, I think in terms of the livability question, though, what you're raising is a good one, it's like, do you want to take a more aggressive stance in how to manage some of those trips on certain streets?
Right.
Yeah.
And I wish there was something that we could throw in there about safety too, and maybe it doesn't involve land use, but, I mean, those seems to be, I mean, every single time that we have a hearing about density, it is traffic and safety.
Well, I mean, traditionally, what communities do is they use, and we talked about this earlier, and Kim highlighted it, was the urban design features, what was meant there is it could be, you know, putting stuff in the right of way, basically, it's like, it's like, you know, doing those bulb-outs, doing, planting trees along the street, slowing the traffic down, making it harder to get through a certain area with, whether it's, you know, chicanes, or whether it's diverters, or what it might be, but...
Right, or if it's developing bicycle paths away from the main roadway, and allowing that traffic to flow freer.
But just having some sort of traffic management program, some trigger that says, this is where, when you want to, you know, initiate that.
And, but, is that in the transportation chapter?
No, it is, it is, it is something we would put in that chapter.
Do we want to put something in this chapter?
As Adam was just pointing out, we could make sure that we address certain things. You know, thing is, I don't know if there already isn't something like that in the TSP today, there could be.
Could you throw that idea out to the CPAC and see what they think of it, and then maybe just do a little bit of research, and see what's, and then let the CPAC kind of make that decision?
It's worth chewing on.
Yep.
Great. All right, how are you doing? Any final comments?
I have one question. I just had to ask this question about the Community Engagement Summary Report, and I was really surprised by the number of non-resident survey respondents.
David mentioned that.
Yeah, that's, that's something that, you know, has been brought up a number of times, and a lot of that, you know, we, we don't have the specifics on individual responses, but the North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council, definitely because natural resources and environmental quality was included, they made a conservative, you know, a big push for their members to weigh in, and so there are a number of people that live in Jennings Lodge, and Oak Grove, and others, that definitely responded to the survey, because they're, that watershed covers more than just Milwaukee.
Okay, okay, very good, thanks.
That's our, that's our assumption, is that's a big point.
It's stuck. I was going like, what?
Yeah, it's definitely higher than it's been in the past, and that's because, I mean, I know a number of members that have said, you know, and that actually called and emailed me, asking about it, hey, can we even respond to this? And I said, yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick comment, I've been pretty quiet tonight, I'm feeling a little under the weather, but I just wanted to thank the folks who came out, I think it is really great to have people participating in the process, and listening to the discussion, and be that much more informed to weigh in as this moves down, so thank you to everybody. Kim, I think you did a killer job facilitating the conversation today. And Greg, your questions were so savvy, and really helped, I really appreciate it, the way you kind of got us through the map conversation, it was very enlightening to me, so thank you.
Go team, right?
Let's go team.
All right, so I have one more comment.
Okay. Oh, man.
Before all this is said and done.
I was all ready to hug it out.
And I don't know if this is a planning-level decision or not, but I would strongly like to recommend that you take one of the citizens that has been here, that is worried about the density, maybe Ms. Orlando, or Ms. Gunyan Riker, or one of those, and ask them to sit in on the, on the rest of the comprehensive plan meetings, especially for the urban design, and even for the synthesis process, and just invite them to sit at the table. I used to go to the meetings, but you just sit there in the public, and you can't speak, and you can't, you know, address anything. And I think that this is important, that, you know, we talk about community involvement, people get involved, and we have an open door that we can actually let them, even if it's a little bit come lately, but I think that they have a passion about this, and that way they can sit around a room with a group of people that have been working on this, and come up with either a solution, or an idea, or a resolution, or something like that, to be able to handle this. And I would encourage you, I don't know if it's the mayor that makes that decision, I don't know if the CPAC members are, but since we haven't had the CPAC meeting yet, I would just make that recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
And then, my last comment is, is that, when you do talk about the synthesis, I think it's really important that you also look for conflicts of interest. In other words, did we put in a policy that totally conflicts with another policy? And be able, that wasn't on the list, and so, I just want to make sure that that gets in there, because conflicts of interest cause real problems, and so, you know, you need be able to find those, and weed them out, and then negotiate it out, which one's either more important, or weighs heavier.
That's the, that's what you guys get to do, when they're in conflict, you get to sort it out.
Well, hopefully, you know, the CPAC, when they go through it, and...
One thing I wanted to make sure the audience heard before we end this, is where the points are for input. I mean, we still have public hearings coming up on all of these policies, so that's going to, that's going to happen this fall. We haven't identified the dates yet, but there's two sets of public hearings, one before the Planning Commission, and one before the council. So, all these policies that we talked about today, as well as the policies that have been pinned down, they come back for discussion. We have talked about holding an open house, a public open house, before we open those hearings, so that we can talk to folks about that process.
That's great. Thank you for that, that's really helpful. Okay, well, with that, thank you, staff, for the excellent presentation tonight.
And thank you guys for the map, it actually was extremely helpful.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to other business and updates. Do commissioners or staff have any other business or updates?
No.
Do commissioners have any other items for discussion?
Not at this time.
All right, now we'll review the forecast for future meetings, which Denny already kind of did, so we don't have to do that. And then with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second pen?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.
You make that one.